We're gonna go ahead and start.
Yep.
Totally. Welcome to the Select Board meeting if you'll join me in pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to the January 22nd meeting of the Reedfield Select Board. Do we expect people to be joining us from the Torsey Lake Association later?
We do. We do. I told them around seven o'clock.
Okay, great. Okay.
What day, what meeting did you say this was?
Did I, I read the minutes, which were January 22nd. This is actually February 4th, the day after they just won the Super Bowl.
That's right.
For the sixth time, let me add.
Yes, let it be known.
So, thank you, thank you for that correction. So, we'll move on to the Select Board minutes of January 22nd. And I will make a suggestion in regards to that. Under 19068, if you see the larger paragraph, and it ends, is really honorary, and I think what I intended to mean, and I'm not exactly sure, is it's really, and it's really about honoring prior, prior commitment. So, we were talking, I was talking about the state of Maine honoring their commitment.
Revenue sharing commitment.
Yeah. So, that would be a change that I would ask for. Are there other changes or thoughts on the minutes of January 22nd? I can check those words with you if you need, Kristen. Okay. Anything else?
I would make a motion to accept the minutes as amended. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as amended with my comments. And any discussion on that motion? Hi Fran. Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the warrants. Dennis, you were doing the warrant.
You got it. The warrants, we had two for state fees. One in the amount of $825, one in the amount of $4,641.35. Warrant 32 was just payroll, in the amount of $15,212.27. Warrant 33, which you can see on the warrant recap in your packet. The big ticket items, $27,395.78 went to Cushion Construction, that is for road maintenance, and in this particular period, it's always nice to have, there's been a lot of ice this winter. And I would say, from Dennis Price's point of view, that the folks with Cushion Construction have done a very nice job getting out there when they needed. Regional School Unit 38, their payment, is another big ticket item there. You could see one of, still significant, four-digit numbers, $1,600 for salt. I always liked Morton's salt. When it rains, it pours, I suppose. And then, nothing else that I think stood out, but I'd certainly entertain any questions about that. So, what I would do is, I would make a motion to approve the warrant 32, in the amount of $15,212.27, and to approve warrant 33, in the amount of $346,060.9.
I'll second that?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve warrants 32 and 33 in the stated amounts. Is there any discussion? So, I do have a question. So, and this may actually direct more to Eric. On, just because we're having kind of a different kind of winter, like we always seem to have.
Yeah.
Is, are we starting to get overextended on the salt side, or is?
We're getting close. I think that we'll be okay.
So, this is a within budget expenditure?
This is within budget. The next one.
May not be.
May not be, yeah. So, I think that we're on target. If we can last with what we have, we'll be okay. There's a fair amount in the salt sand shed, it's probably half full, but that can go quickly, especially when you get a quarter inch, or a half inch, or this nonsense we've had the last couple storms, that you still have to put the same amount of material on. So, it's, I think we'll be close. We might go over, but we do have statutory authority, if necessary, to overexpand that account and use other sources, so.
Right, the amount's not, I mean, it's a considerable amount, because it's well over $1,000, but just kind of curious as to where that was headed.
I think that's a good question.
Any other questions, comments on the warrant?
Just, hopefully Eric will talk about this during his time, but the Norton Home inspections, the building inspection was $300, that was for the fire department?
Yes.
Fire station.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, the motion's on the floor. All in favor of the motion to approve warrants, the warrants as stated. Thank you.
Good job, good job.
He caught up to us.
I will point out, there was a typographical error on the actual treasurer's warrant, so I'll ask you to refrain from signing this tonight. You approved the appropriate amounts, but I will get a revised corrected treasurer's warrant and have you sign that at a later date.
Okay.
For the record.
What was the change?
The top, the date is wrong, and the amount at the 32, the 52.
The 122, I see.
Yeah, I just went with what was on the front.
We call it cut and paste in the business.
Yeah.
C and P.
But.
Okay, we'll move on to Select Board communications. Are there any communications from the Select Board itself?
Yes, I just want to say once again, if you're interested in helping out with Heritage Days, we've already got some ideas floating around, and we've had some interests come in to be a part of the volunteer organization. Remember, you can volunteer in number of different ways. It's not just to be at the meetings and planning, but day of help, and any kind of interesting activities that you're, that you have in mind. We're looking at, again, having three areas of interest: downtown, near the meeting house, up at the ball fields, the old fairgrounds, and down by the beach. So, if you're interested, check out the Facebook page of the Town of Reedfield. There's a link there that you can fill out, or you could come by the town office and get a volunteer form and let us know that you're interested.
Thank you. Other members of the board?
Just, just as we're trying to find volunteers to take over the library book sale.
Okay.
So, if anyone's.
Or to assist with that, in some way.
I think that's a great idea.
And so, is that for this coming year?
This coming Heritage Day.
Okay. Great. So, the call is out on that. Anything else?
Eric, I don't know, are you, in your staff report, going to talk about the fire department, the fire station building inspection report?
In summary, yeah.
Okay, then I will wait there.
So, the only thing I would add is just, this is just kind of a thought for future information and for the Budget Committee. We are working on taking a look at solar presentations for the town. Those are in process. I do have some concerns about, with this change of administration, if there's going to be a more favorable, more favorability towards municipalities doing this kind of project, as we have talked about. So, I think probably this solar ordinance that we may end up working on, not ordinance, excuse me, I shouldn't have said ordinance, warrant article that we work on, may be non-financial. In other words, it may state, here's some financial parameters for the town, to continue looking at this and to not exceed current projected expensing on electricity, but it may not be an actual, it may not designate an actual vendor, in other words. So, we're still looking at that. And we may want to let things sit out there for another six months, to see where the legislature and the governor's going with that.
They're gonna.
So, it's just kind of an FYI, that's kind of, I think, the direction we may go with the warrant. So, it may be a non-financial warrant item. But basically, I do want to hear what the town thinks about it, so that's why I would like to see it get out there on a warrant article. Staff reports.
All right, I'm just gonna give a verbal tonight. I'll start with that winter maintenance. We have had quite a winter, a lot of more ice than we typically have this time of year, and it has caused a few issues here and there, on some of the roadways and on the sidewalk. But we are out trying to address those, both municipal staff and the contractor, as soon as we can. But I will advise everybody to just be careful, because the snowbanks, they're dense, and they're sliding, and they do melt pretty quickly onto those surfaces. We had a good melt today. Hopefully, it'll stay that way for another day. But please use caution when you're out there, because it is, it is a little bit tricky. Maintenance of buildings is another major category that I wanted to talk about. Catherine's pointed out that we did just receive a report on the fire station. We had the same gentleman that did the library inspection, provided similar service for the fire station. I was there last Sunday, and spent two and a half hours with him, walking around the building, looking at everything, trying to figure out where that smell was coming from the drain. It was, it was a unique experience for me anyway.
It was interesting that odors were mentioned a number of times in that report.
Yeah, yep. And I think that we've, I talked to Lee this morning, and we're chasing that one down. But in any event, that, that report, and the library report, both will be put up on the website, so people can have that information publicly. The fire station had a few key issues. We had some door work that needs to be done, where the safety features that you normally would see in a garage, it didn't quite work the way it was supposed to. There was a cardboard box test, and the box was crushed mercilessly by the, by the door. So, stay out of the way of the doors until we get them fixed, basically.
Right.
It failed.
It did. Two of the three failed that test. But outside of that, the bays looked good. There was very, very few issues. We had one GFCI receptacle issue outside. The electrical supply, that heavy-duty, I believe it's aluminum cable, needs to be replaced. But interior, we had also an issue with the bathroom. We still don't have a sink in there, and that's something that we need to correct quickly as possible, because it just doesn't, there's no reason not to. We have the drain plumbed, and it's all ready to go. So, we're looking at that. Also, in the bathroom there, the light fixtures were temporarily covered, and they need to be permanently covered. So, some issues there that can be addressed. None of them are major structural issues. We did have a lot of insulation that has been misplaced, and a need for much more than we currently have. We're probably at about five and a half, six inches on those bays and over the main area, and as long as we keep those, we should have twice that, probably. And we're looking at blown insulation. The reason this was conducted beyond trying to get a baseline for routine maintenance was to assess whether or not we had something to work with, if we were looking at a proposal to expand, as has been considered in several years past. I think the last time was 2012. As you know, I'm interested in doing that again, looking at that as part of our budget and part of the warrant process. So, the due diligence that needed to be done was this review. So, we've taken that first step. We're taking the steps to address the immediate issues with the existing building, including the odor, because that just, you know, there's no reason for that to be there. And then, move ahead. I'll follow up with that by saying that I have contacted the architect for the last go-around with the, the fire department building, and waiting for a response from him. But I think that what they had done, that work that was done last time, can easily be translated into a future project here, that hopefully is a little bit smaller in scale, and a bit more, I won't say practical, because what they proposed was a great, solid fire station. But I'm looking to maybe be more creative with how we deal with sleeping spaces and things like that, that might possibly be able to be combined with office space, depending on how it works. But any event, we're pursuing that, that piece as well. So Catherine, did you want to jump in on any of that, or did that cover what you were looking for, or?
I would like to jump in, thank you.
Yeah.
So, first, I'd like to thank you for having the report done, because I had asked for that to be done, and I really appreciate it. I was a little dismayed that, at the beginning, it didn't state what year the building was actually constructed.
1978, I think.
That's what I recall, because that was when I moved here. But it didn't say that. I mean, it was referenced multiple times, that as this was a pre-1979 building of some number of years. So, that, I would like that included.
Okay.
My other great concern was the step to the front door is not of the right height. The outside, it was over 12 inches, he stated, and that doesn't meet safety requirements.
That's right.
That's a simple thing.
Yes, yep, yep.
And then, the door between the non-garage space and the garage is a sliding door that doesn't seal, and I can't imagine that those odors coming in from the garage are particularly healthy.
Well, they're certainly not stopped by that door. And that's one of the things we're working on as a priority as well.
Some of these are getting streamed into regular maintenance, so.
Absolutely.
Well, and that's what I'm looking at here, is I, in my thinking, that's maintenance that should not have ever been allowed to exist, those issues, the sink, the overhead doors, et cetera. I'm kind of dismayed that that's the condition of a town building. I think there are probably multiple reasons this has occurred. I don't know that I need to go into them, but I'm not so concerned with the reasons why it's gotten to this state, but I'm really concerned with how we handle it going forward. I'm hoping that those things that you were talking about are going to be fixed in the very near future, as in number of weeks, not months. I don't see any of those as being totally outside of our budget availability that we have to do building maintenance.
Definitely not, definitely not.
But I, I would like there to be better communication, I guess, between the fire department and the maintenance staff, so that things like soffit pieces being missing, a window being propped open for the winter, those kinds of things don't occur.
Yeah.
And I think that takes a joint effort, where you have a different part of the town, you know, it's the fire department who occupies that building, and I realize maintenance and you aren't in that building all the time. But I think we need better communication, so that we don't have that happening. I'm not sure if it's a situation of each party thinks the other is responsible, and so nobody's there, or what. But if you could just make a plan going forward, so we know that those things will be monitored regularly.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think that would protect the investment that the town has, especially talking about revamping the building. I mean, it is 41 years old now, so it needs some attention. Is that when you were born?
Seventy-seven.
Wow.
Oh, my goodness.
So, I think looking forward is much better than looking backward. I have no need to look backwards, but I'd just like to make sure that we don't have things like that come up that go unaddressed in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, you know, I did go right into the possibility of addition, but I mean, I wouldn't even think about considering pursuing that until we get those issues in the building that exists currently squared away, because it's a fundamental, you know, and I think easily achieved goal, and we've already sort of worked with the maintenance staff to make that happen.
Great. I mean, there are a lot of other little things that, you know, the insulation and all, it really makes a difference, but I'm looking at safety things. And here we have the fire department who is helping us be safe, and their building isn't safe. And that just bothers me.
Understandably.
So, I guess we can look forward to, in your written reports from month to month over the next couple of months, probably mentioning something about that, or Catherine asking a question.
I figured I'll do it before she asks.
Yeah.
It usually, it usually works best.
I'm just putting them both out there. So, I too have a question about this, and.
Sure.
And it gets to the adding of insulation into the attic area.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can manage within our current budget, because it would save on fuel costs? I have no idea what adding, I think they mentioned nine inches?
Yeah.
I don't know if that was a nine aggregate, or a nine additional, or whatever.
I think adding nine, yeah.
So, I'm just wondering, is there, can we get a cost estimate on that?
Yeah, absolutely. My thought on that would be to, to get an estimate in conjunction with other, other major work. It's a fairly large space. I'm not sure I'd want to have this done in-house. So, we will look at getting that contracted out to have that work done.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't expect that to be done in-house, but I, my thought is that, you know, if we're looking at some work on, on it, that I wouldn't necessarily hold this for a major project. I would try to look at that, simply because it could save us fuel costs.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've had substantial fuel costs there over the past several years, so it will make a difference.
Okay.
And to Catherine's point about the window, we did find out who left that open. It was somebody that was concerned about the smell, so they, they weren't worried about the heat, they just wanted to get the odor out. So, anyway.
And do any other members?
Poor choices all around.
Do any other members of the board have anything else further to add?
Well, we're gonna pour the library, should we pour the fire department?
There isn't any reason that we couldn't. I would, we have the library on the agenda, so I will make a note of that.
Yeah, I don't see a reason we couldn't put them either right together, or even do it a separate one, but.
Yeah, we could do it the same.
I would love that.
They're close enough.
In my time on the Select Board, there hasn't been like an official visit, but I think it says to.
They're close enough.
At least cycle through.
We tried to do, yeah, we did the transfer station, I think.
Yeah, cemeteries, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, well, very good.
All right.
I would like to thank Eric, in his role as road commissioner, for taking my call late one evening about road conditions, and for the very prompt nature that he dealt with it, and that John Cushion dealt with it. I think it's a wonderful system we have going in the town currently, so thank you.
Thanks, yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, I'll, I'll just.
I can say nice things, too.
Oh, you were not done?
I'm not done, I'm done with the fire department, I got a few other things.
Sorry.
He gave me an opening, and I just, whoo.
Yeah. We do have a couple of things happening. As you know, Robyn's retiring.
Yeah.
And so, I want to make a public announcement for the public, I call it a retirement reception. On March 1st, Friday, March 1st, from noon until 3:30, we will have snacks, and coffee, and tea, and things like that, and a chance to, to say hello, goodbye, thank you, whatever you'd like, to, to Robyn. That afternoon, we wanted to give a public time for folks to come in, and, you know, she's been working very hard for us for 15 years plus, and so I know there's a lot of appreciation, and we want to give an outlet for that.
And that's here.
And send her off, that'll be here, yeah, at the town office.
And is she gonna plan her own retirement plan?
Yeah.
No, we're, we're, we're working on that. We're working on that. We're going, doing one outside of the, outside of town, basically, but.
Do you need anything baked for that?
No, I think we're just gonna do appetizers and stuff at a restaurant, so trying to keep that as a separate event from the public reception, so.
Are you offering to bake for the public reception?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be wonderful.
With the one here in the office.
Yeah, oh, the one at the office, absolutely, that'd be great, that'd be great, thank you, yeah. I thought you were gonna say to bake for the one at the restaurant.
So, should we ask Robyn what her favorites are?
That's right. And what time is that, over in the restaurant one?
That's gonna be.
After work.
After work, after work, yeah. I'll send you guys an email on that. So, with, with that, we are, I've made the announcement in the newsletter, but we have hired our new clerk. She had worked here previously for seven years. So, Deb Nichols will be our, our new clerk. I think she's gonna do a fantastic job for us. She will be overlapping with Robyn for about two weeks. So, one thing that I will be potentially coming to the board and asking for would be some funds to cover that unexpected overage of staff time. Two weeks isn't a small amount, and so I want to, I want to be prepared in the event that we need to draw some money out of the undesignated fund, not the undesignated, excuse me, contingency, for this contingency event.
I'm glad there's an overlap.
Yeah, it's important and necessary, even with somebody that's been here in the past.
And we had discussed that publicly when you were talking about advertising the job and the process and so on, and it might have been more than two weeks that you were looking at, so I think this is.
We were looking at more, potentially, yes.
I think this is great to have only a two-week overlap.
We might need to call Robyn back in on occasion to help out, but we'll, we'll work on that separately.
Great.
So, another wage issue that we are approaching is, as we get further along in the year, our code enforcement hours are, are appearing to be over, in large part because of all the legal activities that we've had to deal with in town. And so, that's another one where I'm going to try to curtail that as much as possible, but come end of this fiscal year, I may be looking to have some use of that contingency to cover that unexpected accrual of time.
I don't think there's any way to avoid that. When these situations come up, we can't plan for them, so.
Yep, okay. Those are just the two ones I wanted to talk about, as far as the wage issue goes. And then generally, I've been working quite a bit on the budget over the past few weeks, and I think that we're, we're making some good progress. We'll talk about it more tonight, later on. But again, we've had great input from the staff, from the boards and committees. Everybody involved so far has been, has been quite good, and we've, I'm very optimistic that we will be able to keep, on the municipal side, a flat, a flat budget. We got our draft audit back today, and I'm quite, quite pleased with the way that was turning out, as far as the fund balances for designated and undesigned funds. It's looking quite good, and I think that we are, again, being able to keep, keep things stable, and still add a little bit of buffer here and there to some of our reserve accounts, but also keep them at a reasonable level. So, I'm really pleased with where that's come out, so. I don't have a full treasurer's report, because we're just getting our financial statements back from the bank, and Teresa's working on those and getting those to me. So, I'll have a full treasurer's report on the 19th, as well as a written administrator's report, town manager's report.
When do you expect that we'll actually see copies of the audit?
Final draft should be, I think, within two weeks, so I'm hoping to have it ready for the 19th.
Is the 19th our next meeting?
That is, it's a Tuesday, the 19th, yes, yep.
Monday's a holiday.
And then, we meet twice the week after that?
You might have something for budget, but I'd have to look at the schedule.
Okay, is that it?
That's all I have, yeah.
Thank you very much, Eric. So, in terms of boards, committees, commissions, and departments, I would like to thank the Conservation Commission for their minutes of December 12th, 2018, the age-friendly minutes of December 12th, 2018, and the Budget Committee minutes of January 3rd, 2019. They're all online, I recommend that you review them, if any, of any interest. Do we have members of the public who would like to address us? Are you all here for, you're all here for the Torsey, right? So, are you expecting anyone else?
No.
No. Okay, so, we'll take you guys out of order, so we don't have any public communications on any other subjects?
I do.
Please do, Fran.
Crack a few ribs.
That's not good.
Oh, that's never good.
Franz Ambela, 106 Church Room, Reed Field. I have a little pet peeve about the access to our post office.
Okay.
In fact, I'm so concerned that I eliminated my box at the post office because of the condition of accessing it in the wintertime. And several months ago, I approached the postmaster and told him what my complaints was, lack of parking, lack of maintenance from the road, this, talking about steps, Catherine, height of steps. I didn't measure it, but I'm guessing the step between the road and the post office ramp is like 10 inches, okay, close to it. Standard code steps should be between seven and a half and eight for exterior step. The reason I'm mentioning all this is because leaving the post office back in probably May or June of this past year, as I was stepping off the step, luckily I had my hand on the railing, and a car came through the alleyway, and if I didn't have my hand on the railing, I would have been hit by that car. Okay, I also approached, approached the manager of Reed Field Family Market. I also called the Department of Transportation and mentioned the fact that that alleyway is a, an accident waiting to happen, because you've got traffic vehicles going in, vehicles coming out. And what I tried to emphasize to the postmaster and the manager of the Family Market was, there should be restrictions on coming out. You should be able to go in, but not come out, because you can access it from the back.
Make it one-way.
The, the visual aspect, coming out of there in a vehicle, you've got a building on the left, building on the right. And I think. And I think it's, it's, uh, it's very dangerous, and we have a lot of old people in this town, including me. And, uh, I reached the point where there was no satisfaction from talking to the postmaster, Department of Transportation, or the grocery store manager. So I decided to put my own mailbox up at the end of my driveway, and I'm very happy with it. I can control accessing that, okay? I think this might be a topic for the, um, Age Friendly Committee to maybe look into it, to try to, uh, make it safer to go in and out of the post office.
Uh, Fran, if I could interrupt a second, uh, it, it is actually, uh, they, they had met there last summer, um, uh, and we met with DOT Traffic Engineers and the, the Postal Service and the owner of the Family Market.
You did.
Uh, to discuss, uh, what might be done there, um, and, uh, there are a couple of different options, but, but absolutely, they've, um, they've started that process. Uh, and, um, uh, that is something that, uh, when we talk about the road budget upcoming, um, we'll be looking at the possibility of, of, uh, doing some engineering and work there. It currently is not a town of Reed Field responsibility.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, however, we might be able to extend, um, the sidewalk just a little bit from in front of that store, down in front of the post office, to address some of those issues. Um, and, uh, I, I think, uh, there's a possibility that, that we could make some big improvements as far as safety for pedestrians and, uh, vehicles coming out of that area. So, you're, you're absolutely right, um, but I just wanted to point out that, that, that this, it's kind of started, but we'll talk, we can talk more about that later, uh, but you're absolutely right.
Well, I, I just felt on my own, I wasn't getting anywhere, and maybe the town, you know, the, the, the town might have some more authority to, uh, get these people to act.
They're, they're not gonna do anything for us, uh, we'd have to pay for it, but, um, it's the state's right of way, but they basically said, if you wanna make it safer on your dime, go for it. Um, so, um, we're, we're looking into that option, I mean, it, it's probably a twenty to twenty-five thousand dollar fix, um, depending, um, but, uh, what's, what's an accident, what's a fatality? Um, so it's, it's something worth looking into, and we are looking into it.
Okay, well, I appreciate.
And the alleyway is controlled public property, is that correct?
Uh, the alleyway is something we can't do anything about, um, that's private property, all we can handle is that, that little strip of land, uh, in front of the post office.
The thought of having it one-way, though, it sounds like that might be a consideration.
It's, it's been discussed with the owners and they're not interested at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, because people park on both sides.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a mess.
I said, okay, fine, and, and.
Oh, yeah, there's like four.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, well, well, anyway, I just thought, it's something that.
I would hope that if, if we're gonna talk about that, that, I mean, the building is owned by the masons, correct?
That's what I was told, too, yes.
And they need to be part and parcel of that conversation, because the.
They're part and parcel of the Age Friendly Committee, actually.
Yeah, and, and they, they were part of that discussion, the, the issue is the store owns the driveway.
Okay.
So, I'll put it that way.
But the, the masons must own the walkway that has the ramp with the railing and the walk in front that's the cement that has the step that's.
They do own the rail, yes, um, the asphalt, uh, curbing is DOT, so it's, it's a, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah, it seems like there's a lot of.
And, and I'm not saying we shouldn't look into it, but I think we need to try and involve everybody who should be.
Good issue.
Yeah.
Good point.
Well, I, I, thank you, Fran.
Thank you.
I have some additional thoughts in that, that I'll talk to you about. Um, there may be a way to control some of that traffic, I'm not sure. Um, but if somebody has a driveway, for example, put in, um, we do some code work around that.
Uh, we do for, for new but existing, um.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Um, with the, um.
So we're looking to take.
With the board's, with the board's agreement, yes?
Yes.
Nineteen oh seventy-two out of order, and do it now, please?
Yep.
Please.
I'm all in favor of that, so we have consensus on that.
That would be you guys. Yeah.
Okay, so let us proceed with, consider a memorandum of understanding with the Torsey Pond Association for Repair Work at the Torsey Pond Bridge and Dam. Eric?
All right, thank you. Um, so, uh, we have been aware of, of cracking issues on the, um, the bridge, uh, the, the footings of the bridge, uh, at the municipal level for a few years now, in large part because of, uh, issues that were brought to our attention by the folks that, um, own the dam. Uh, and this is a very interesting situation where we have, uh, joint ownership, uh, I would say, um, joint and severable, I don't know. Uh, it's one structure, uh, the dam is contiguous with the abutment and, and the footings for our, our bridge. Uh, the dam is owned by the Torsey Pond Association, the bridge was formerly owned by DOT, but then, uh, several years ago was, um, returned to the town for our ownership and maintenance. Uh, and it's one piece of concrete, uh, it is, um, inseparable, uh, however, we have, um, a line somewhere, uh, on that dam where our responsibilities end and the responsibilities of the Torsey Pond Lake Association, uh, begin, and we've been working together for a couple of years to try to understand what that situation looked like, what, um, where the responsibilities, uh, were, uh, and how to proceed with that. Uh, and so a couple of years ago, um, we had a discussion about, um, uh, cracking and how to address it, we were looking at some, uh, proposals from at least one company to do the crack sealing. Uh, we've budgeted for that over the past two years, the town of Reed Field, five thousand a year for two years, uh, with the intent of doing something this year. Um, in that time, I believe, uh, there's been an increase in the scope of what was originally looked at by the dam association. Um, uh, I might be mistaken about that, but I think that things grew a little, um, and so their needs were bigger, um, and we also realized that beyond the cracking on our side of the, of the, uh, that invisible line, uh, that we have some scouring, uh, and some issues around the base of our, uh, our, um, bridge footings. So, our scope is a little bit bigger than, than just the cracking we had originally looked at as well, so, um, uh, Torsey Pond Association's been very good about being proactive and meeting, uh, and discussing, and really being a, a, a partner before we were, even have a partnership, uh, to make sure that we can get the most out of this, that if we're doing work, uh, and if they're doing work, we can do it together uh, and have as much value, uh, for both parties, uh, as we can. So, um, we've been meeting a bit more often, uh, the last couple of months, uh, once a month, I've met, um, with, with Fran and Keith Cowling, uh, who, um, uh, Keith's a Mount Vernon resident, that's right, isn't it? Yes, uh, and Fran's a, of course, a Reed Field resident, um, and, uh, and, and Darcy's here as well, and we've talked, but not so much about this, but, uh, we all know Darcy, so, uh, uh, they have a good group of people together, ready to, um, help manage and support, uh, the repairs that are gonna happen, uh, and I think that we can offer similar support and, and, um, and resources, um, with the understanding that our financial resources, uh, are divided appropriately so that we aren't, um, uh, taking on a private responsibility on the town side, they're not paying for some of our work just because we're gonna say, well, you know, it's, we're not, we're not gonna look at this, because I think we, we, we need to, and I think we, we are. Um, they've been very proactive as well in putting some money in, they had some preliminary engineering work done, uh, a lot of time, uh, and efforts gone into this on their part uh, to develop, um, reference materials, background materials, um, I, I never quite had the time to go and get a full schematic of the bridge design from DOT. Keith went and did that for us, um, in large part because it was gonna help with, with their, uh, component of this work, so, um, I just wanted to put that out there, all of it, uh, as a way of saying that, that we've already started working together on this, uh, we've known for a couple of years that we have these needs, uh, and this MOU, uh, in essence, uh, is a way for us to set some things, um, forward that'll allow us to work together as successfully as possible, as transparently as possible, so that we can accomplish what we want, they can accomplish what they want, uh, and we can have an even distribution, um, or as much as possible, uh, of, of responsibilities for managing that project, uh, while still maintaining that financial separation uh, such that they're paying for the dam, we're paying for the bridge, uh, that's very important, I think it's pretty clearly spelled out here. But I think that, that we and they both have the capacity, um, as far as the personnel involved, uh, to make this happen, uh, and to work collaboratively. Uh, and the financial resources, we're all working on together right now, so.
So, are we looking at F twenty projects?
We're looking at, um, planning and perhaps some, um, design work or bidding, uh, in FY nineteen, and then, um, FY twenty, we, 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 we may have some outlay, but the goal here is to do this as soon as possible, but right now, uh, we have a couple of steps to go through. Uh, first of all, um, I think that, that we need to put a little bit more money aside for one more year to address some of the scouring issues, uh, and perhaps some of the other costs that might, um, come up with, um, doing this work.
So the MOU goes through Ju- June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, so we've got a good period of time.
We have a good period of time, so, yeah, so it's, it's broad.
So, what I wanna do is, um, let us ask one question on this, and then, uh, ask the Torsey Pond Association to, um, to, to say anything they would like to say, or give some additional information. So, has this been legally reviewed?
Uh, no, no, it has not, it's just an MOU, it has no legal binding, so there's no need to spend lawyer money on it.
Okay.
It's just a, a non-binding agreement that we can both, um, exit at any time, for any reason.
Okay, fine. Um, would anybody like to address the select board?
Would you like to hear what's going on, or?
Yeah, why don't you just give us a little bit of the flavor of what is going on?
But we need you to do it at the mic.
Yeah.
Because we're being recorded and, um, broadcast, and if you have any financial information about, you know, is this a five thousand dollar project or a five hundred thousand dollar project?
No, I give a, an estimate, it's.
Thank you, I understand how broad we're talking.
Okay, my name's Keith Cowling, I'm the treasurer and the dam keeper for the Torsey Pond Association. As Eric said, I'm a Mount Vernon resident. Um, Eric said that we've been monitoring it as a dam keeper, I've been monitoring the dam, there's a lot of cracks, I tend to be a very proactive person, I believe spending the money today is better than spending three times the amount of money tomorrow. And so, we've been going, and actually, this has been going on for more than a couple of years, this has been, I think, like, four years, five years, I've been talking about this? And it was just to repair the cracks. Um, over the past year, I've noticed degradation in the concrete behind the sluice, so you have a metal sluice, has two gates in it, and there's concrete that's starting to chip away, and by chips, you know, maybe one of them is ten inches in diameter, and if you look at it, there's cracks going through, um, in toward the face of the dam. Now, you know, I, I've talked to various people, turns out my son's actually a professional engineer, works for Kleinschmidt Associates, the firm that actually did the work for us. Talked to him, and they can't give any technical guidance for, when will it fail, no one knows, and by failure, it's not a catastrophic failure, it's, it'll start to leak, and we'll have a hard time maintaining water level in the lake, which if it's the middle of summer, residents won't be happy, um, I can attest to that. Um, this year, um, and it was actually just before, I think, our association meeting, I went down and just checked the dam, that was a little bit early for the meeting, and we actually had water coming by the sluice, right around the plate in one of these areas. So anyways, I had my son come and look at it, did a kind of a unofficial inspection, and the area that I was looking at, he wasn't so concerned with. He actually looked on the opposite side and saw that there's water seeping through the foundation, to him, that's worse, because it's actually water moving through, even though it's not a great amount, that it potentially in the winter freeze-off cycles will crack, and you'll have a, you know, further chipping, erosion of that back area behind the sluice, so we've raised this up to now resurfacing the concrete, so it would require us to put a copper dam in front, take the sluice out, um, abrade the concrete, the, the old concrete that's deteriorated, uh, it'll probably get formed out, and I'm not sure how much information you have on it, there's actually a, a report from the engineers, and.
We have it.
We will, uh, fill, I think it's roughly four to eight inches of concrete, and we'll actually come in further than it is now, because it really doesn't do anything for us, it does, the gates are well within that area. And, um, it'll be similar to what was done, I think, down at the bridge down here, down the road, I think that was a shot creek, um, this case, I'm pretty sure it'll be a formed, um, just because of the thickness involved. Um, and then also, we actually have to make sure the guide is reformed so that we can put the sluice back in and it seals. You know, I've been saying, you know, initially I was saying, like, thirty grand, uh, replace this, to do the work, and that was kind of, I'm an engineer, builder, I kinda, you know, really no real reason to have what the number was. Now, I's attended a road committee meeting, was it about a year ago, Eric, I think?
Just about, yeah.
And we were talking about the cracks, and I made a comment about what we were looking at, that future we were looking at doing the dam work at the time. And one of the other members, who was, I think, an engineer, um, said, well, thirty is probably, it's gonna be more like fifty, you know, just a judgment, we really don't know.
Okay.
So what our plan is, the thought is, that we need to go out and raise thirty, fifty grand, now, we will go and go out with them, uh, for quotes, and actually get hard quotes from various vendors, and, you know, hope it comes in that range. This, uh, spring, when Darcy writes out her, uh, newsletter, we plan to start a fundraiser with the association and lay out what the cost estimate's gonna be, and try to raise the money over this coming summer. Typically, you know, after the newsletter goes out, that's when all the residents will kick in their memberships, you might get some extra money from mill foil or other activities, just I even have people come and just say, how much you need, and I try to answer that as like, well, just give a little bit now and I'll come back to you later, but, uh, hopefully, um, we could raise a substantial portion of that, and at the same time, we're hoping that when I say thirty to fifty, that's including a copper dam, and hopefully that we can share some costs that are costs that are associated with both jobs, like the copper dam and so forth.
Yeah.
But, uh, and just to try to kind of maximize the work that we can get done for the money.
Is this Kleinschmidt recommendation in this report, do you agree with that, is that the way that this?
Yes.
Dam is the best to be fixed?
Yes.
For the longest time to benefit the designated.
Yes. Yeah, I'm, I'm a third generation on the north end of the lake, we have like eight or ten camps all in a row that have, you know, the camps will never get sold, and so my, our camp will go to our kids.
Yeah.
And I just believe in spending the money now and to minimize a future ma- you know, major expense, because right now it's on our schedule, you know, we're trying to get it, whereas if it's an emergency schedule and you have to go out and get contractors in on moment's notice, you know how it costs you.
Well, if this, this select board is pretty good at dams, seems.
This one's easy compared to.
Yeah, I think it's much easier in the more.
So that's why I just, I asked the same question before, if this is the best thing, if this is what the residents think is the best thing, and if this is something that we can do, I, I, I think it's, it's common sense, it's a no-brainer to me.
So, the part, thank, are you done, sorry?
Oh, no, 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 absolutely.
Okay, so thank you for what you told us, that's really good, um, and in looking at the pictures, um, that was, I finally figured out what I was looking at on the the red part where they put the overlay tonight. Um, I hadn't seen the vertical one, I was only looking at the one that was sideways, so. Anyway, um, the part that you were just talking about, is that the part that Torsey would be doing, and then there's additional work that is gonna be the responsibility of the town, or is part of what you were talking about, that invisible line is in there, and there's a part of that that the town?
North of that line, which is our ownership, is what I was talking about.
Okay.
But the same time, the fa- whole foundation, it's a monolithic structure, um, goes down into the Reed Field property portion.
Okay.
And the initial was to try to get the cracks all done at once.
Right.
Get a staging app for, you know, go on and try to share cost, because we had a firm out of Gorham, um, can't get the other name right now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, um, Andrew, um, yeah, this is great, isn't it?
But anyways.
Oh, Google Andrew Gorham.
Yeah, we had a firm, um, Knowles, Knowles Industrial.
Knowles, yeah, 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 yep.
That head quoted, geez, he quoted me back with the previous, uh, town manager, and I think our cost was roughly six to nine, the town's cost was five to seven.
That's, that's about right, yeah, yeah, I remember that report.
And, but if we did it together, um, there could be a few thousand dollars in savings in total.
Shared.
Shared, yeah.
Yeah.
So the, the thirty, fifty-ish that you were talking about, is that for the whole project and the town is? and the town is part of it?
No, thirty, I'm thinking it's just the dam portion.
Okay. And so Eric, any feeling?
Including, that includes the cofferdam. So there is some shared there in the, you know.
Right.
But I think the cofferdam is not a huge cost of that.
I'm guessing five or six thousand, but it's hard to say.
Yeah, until we actually get the D E P involved, get contractors in to say what, you know, what they think, what we think. You know, I think it'd be similar to what happened down at Maranaque, that those big bags of sand get thrown out there.
Yeah.
You know, when we replaced the metal sluice, ten years ago now?
Say about eight or nine.
Eight or nine. We just sandbagged it and put a metal, put sandbags out front, put a metal sluice up against the concrete, pulled the old boards out, put the metal sluice down the guides. But that was, you know, just over a couple hour period of time. You know, we're expecting this is probably a solid week to two weeks job. They're gonna have to, a more solid cofferdam with, you know, water bypass so that maintain the water in the stream. And so it's gonna be a little bit more involved.
So do we have a feeling that, Eric, with the amount of work that is expected for the crack sealing, is that what you were talking about?
Well, the crack sealing, the crack sealing is where we started, right? And the base is actually something a little bit separate, and the low water levels the last couple of years have really made it evident that we've got, you know, some scouring that's happening. Scouring is when the stones come through and it, the water comes through and it chips away at the base. So what the work they're doing is actually feeding, will feed well into what we need to do to address that issue at the base, which they're coming out basically about eight inches, six, eight inches from that existing face to cover a large portion of area where they've got major chipping and some leaking. We can extend at the very bottom portion of that, you know, maybe the bottom two feet underneath the bridge, down to the bedrock, and that will be about eight inches by about, what is it, sixteen, twenty feet probably underneath there, maybe a little bit more. But that's the footing work that we would be doing in addition to the crack sealing. My expectation is that given the original proposal, the fact that we'll be sharing some of these costs on the cofferdam, I think that the town of Reedfield component probably be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars round number. We hoping to go out to bid here, you know, this spring to get some better numbers. But we have ten thousand in the bank, and that's why I'm suggesting that we, this year, maybe put another five thousand away. And if we get to twenty twenty-one, when we're actually, you know, perhaps finishing up this work, we, another five thousand dollars would do it. So, but if that doesn't work, I'm getting into the budget piece, we certainly have the money in our reserve for roads to take care of this bridge issue altogether right now, even if it's, you know, twenty-five, thirty-five thousand. I'm hoping it's not, I wouldn't, we'd have to come back to the drawing board a little bit if it was. But Keith's absolutely right. The work needs to be done, and I believe this is the time to do it because it hasn't gotten to the point where we're starting to see six or eight inches of concrete coming off right down where that spalling, or that, not spalling, but the concrete work is. So, yeah, does that answer your question about the cost?
It does. And so I think, go ahead.
I just want to make sure that we all understand tonight that this is good background information in terms of budgeting and just being knowledgeable about the project. But our main consideration on the table will be this MOU, just so that we can coordinate going forward.
Absolutely, yes. Good point.
Yep.
I would make a motion that we approve this memorandum of understanding.
You would authorize the town manager to sign it?
I would authorize the town manager to sign it on behalf of the select board.
I'll second that.
Nice motion.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, village.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, but we can continue discussion.
Okay.
So I want to make sure that we don't cut off any other information that you wanted to mention.
Sure.
Please do, Fran. I hate seeing you doing this.
Yeah.
That's gotta be painful.
I think one of the, my major concern is the undermining of the walls, concrete walls, as the water spills through the dam.
Mm-hmm.
And this is, this is, could be very detrimental when we have high water, we have rain for two or three or four days, and we've got to open the sluice gates all the way.
Yep.
That amount, the force that's going through the sluice into the base of the portion that the town owns could be undermined.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's the key, as well as, you know, the cracks from the wall.
I'm glad you stated that. And I noticed you mentioned footings and so forth. Obviously, we want to make sure that whatever fix at least matches the lifetime of the entire project's expectations as well. So we want to be very coordinated on that. Like you said, let's do something now so it doesn't cost three times, three times as much later. We want to have that same approach in coordinating with you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
On the timing, I just want to be a little more clear in my own mind. So we're looking at, not we, as in the broad we sense you're doing most of the work, but we are all sharing in the responsibility. You're looking at getting bids this spring so that we...
By the spring.
Pardon me?
By the spring.
By the spring.
By the spring.
Okay, so you're looking at getting bids right away, and you will have an amount that you can start raising funds for, and so will we, knowing that that may go up if it's a year or two out. So are you looking or hoping that if everything went perfectly, that you would be doing this work before this next winter? That it would be taking place in the fall of nineteen? Or are you looking at this taking place in the summer of twenty?
Most likely it's twenty.
Okay.
But I guess it would come out with a combination of contract and funding motive. You know, by not nailing them down to the exact time, hopefully that they could fit their schedule now, you know, priority. Hopefully it undermines the cost, you know, of this. But I mean, I think it would take us for sure this summer, this summer, to raise the money. And at that point, you know, I can't imagine making it up all.
Okay.
It will be there.
And the situation right now is not dire enough that it needs to be addressed immediately? This is fairly immediate, having it happen in the next twelve to eighteen months?
It's, yeah, I think it's, there's nothing that says that, you know, we're gonna have major leakage in the next year. You know, the reality is that if it started to leak, there's things that we can do to, you know, throw a sandbag in the leak and try to slow it down some. If it already kicks in, no. And, you know, that combined with like a drought we've had in the past three years in the summer, you know, just evaporation of the lake, we've lost a lot of water.
Well, that's all great information. So Eric, I like your plan of, you know, on the budget aspect, because that's really where we come into play, is trying to get the money together to...
Ahead of time.
Right, if we can. It's a lot less painful to do it a little at a time.
Also, if you're gonna do fundraising this summer, we're gonna have Heritage Day. If you want to have a booth, make a presence there.
Yes, that's a great idea.
That's in August.
Just get in touch with Dennis or myself.
Yeah, Heritage Days, we're gonna have information downtown. You can certainly set up plenty of folks down there, so.
Second weekend of the month.
Great, so we have a motion on the floor, and the motion is to authorize the town manager to sign this MOU. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. So thank you very much. This crowd can limp out if you would like, or you can stay for the rest of the meeting.
Keith, you're the only healthy one there.
It looks tough.
What's wrong with Darcy? She's got a cast.
I fell on the ice.
Of Torsey Lake?
Not of Torsey.
No.
I'm a manager, December thirteenth. And had surgery, I had Patrick Tesla. And so seven weeks out.
Wow, you people are like copycatting me. Don't do that.
Anyway, so, yeah, I think we've all okayed.
She lives to tell the story.
I skated on the back of my head, and then by the splint, I just slipped down the ice hole on my property and landed on the...
Too much ice. Too much ice.
A lot of ice this year.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us all that background.
Thanks, everybody.
Take care.
Thanks, Fran. Yeah. Fran, I'll give you a call later this week about the traffic stuff.
Great. We'll return to old business.
Excellent.
And the next item of business is nineteen zero six four, which is to consider the approval of the revised fee schedule for cemetery lots. What is that fee schedule?
Okay, okay, good, thank you.
I don't think there was any change in the document we have, but it was two hundred and now it will be four hundred.
Yep.
And was that advertised on the website?
Yes, we put it up on the website on the cemetery page.
Okay.
And just for context, you know, they did look around, and Winthrop, for a similar-sized plot, is actually eight hundred. So if anything, we're low regionally, but we're trying to get back into the mix by getting a little bit ahead of where inflation would leave us, but just a little bit ahead, so.
Maybe our soil is softer.
That's right.
It is nice and gentle. It's got a lot of sand in it, so no many stones.
Okay, can I take a motion regards to this?
Yep, nothing has changed in this since we read it last.
No, no, but it's not just the dollar value, though. I do want to point out that there are other parameters here around how the lots are sold and things like that that are important. This is more for the public than for you folks.
Okay.
But it is important to consider, you know, when and how you purchase these, and that it's not just as simple necessarily as walking in. And the sooner the better. We have a lot of folks doing some pre-planning, and it's always a good idea, so.
Yep.
I would make a motion to accept the cemetery regulations as presented in this, our second reading.
I second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'm assuming that the increase would happen immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? It's passed. Thank you for, thank the cemetery work for their work on us, please.
I will.
So we are considering a second draft for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. We have set aside some considerable time for this, but we really went into quite considerable time last time. So I kind of consider this an update?
Yeah, absolutely.
So if you might update what information, Eric, you see is different, and then we can obviously have some discussion questions around it, but probably it'll be a briefer conversation.
Absolutely. So we did have some issues, excuse me, on the front page with references, cell references for the tabulation. So if you look below the bottom of the page, there's those little numbers that say line four plus line eight. We had corrected some of those just as a point of reference. It's a hundred percent correct now. This sheet, the cover sheet, is actually identical to where we were before despite some changes.
This is the same?
This is the same.
This is the same?
The cover sheet, the mill rate calculation sheet. I did get a chance to speak in more depth with the assessor about that very first line, the local taxable valuation. And we are very confident that we're gonna see a one percent increase there. It might be more by the time we get to July.
You're talking about line one?
Yeah, the taxable valuation.
So the one percent increase is not included in that?
It is not included in that yet. Again, we want to, you know, do our due diligence to make sure that we can say that with certainty before we put it into the budget. This is just last year's number, but we have a lot of new construction, so.
One percent's gonna be over two million dollars.
It will be sizable, and so with that being...
Approaching two point five.
Yep. So I think that about forty-five thousand dollars in increased valuation, I think, is what that leads to. So that's a great benefit to offset any potential increases. But that's just the tax base.
Right.
So that was the one thing I wanted to point out on the first page, that the mill rate calculation. And there have been a number of changes, but again, the mill rate is being kept fairly constant, flat right now. We don't, again, have the school numbers, and those will change this calculation. But on the town side, I want to just reiterate that I believe we can keep our net impact the same as it was last year.
So whenever we talk about the school, I always try to make sure we mention the county as well.
And the county, yes, yes, yes.
Because there are three different taxing authorities. And so do we know the number that we preliminarily have plugged in with them is good, or where are they in their process?
The school or the county?
The county.
The county. I don't know. They typically send us a letter. I think it's in March, but I'll have to double check on that, where they tell us what the tax rate will be. I don't know. I haven't checked in on the politics of it or called anybody at the county yet.
Okay.
But that's something that I need to do to...
But you have given almost a two percent increase, so.
We have, yeah.
There is some cushion there.
And it's worth pointing out that that two percent is actually a little bit more generous, it's probably closer to three, because last year, we over budgeted, and they came in a little bit less than that. So that actual increase over the actual is more than the budgeted increase. So we have a bit of a buffer there.
Okay.
That's worth noting. So a couple of areas that we're looking at a bit more closely, obviously buildings and building maintenance and the fire station and the library, and even work here at Giles Hall, those are gonna be some moving targets because we don't know until we put those out to bid exactly what the costs are going to be. However, the way we have this structured, we have the ability to be very flexible in where the funds come from for those projects, whether it be from reserves or borrowing. So even though with the fire station and library project right now, there is a sixty-one thousand dollar proposed expenditure, that could likely go down, the term of the bond could be extended, the cost of the overall borrowing could go up. We don't know until we get further along that road. But that's an area where I'm already seeing things needing to change. So I just wanted to point that out as an area of uncertainty and likely the biggest area that we will see changes throughout the next six weeks as we finalize the budget. Right now, the only other changes that I see coming that are going to have an impact likely would be in the area of assessing. We had, in the first draft of the budget, cut the supplemental assessing hours.
Can you tell me what number?
Oh, sure.
We would see that under?
Yeah.
Is that, are we under administration?
Under administration, yeah.
Ten thirty, ten twenty.
Yep.
Ten thirty, that's right.
I got you. I'm sorry.
And code enforcement is ten, ten thirty. But, so ten twenty, I should be starting off with that. We have been, as of last year, I think it was August, maybe, we talked about adding a GIS program that would help offset some of the costs for this department.
Software.
Software, yes.
Right.
So right now, what we're looking at is we still have hours for supplemental assessing work. I still question whether those are going to be able to be utilized effectively. With the coming on online of that software, we are going to have about a twenty-five hundred dollar annual expenditure for that. And we just got a first review of that website, and it's phenomenal, the amount of information that's available, how easily accessible it is and how complete it is. But anyway, the, that is going to be an added cost. I think that what I'm looking at doing right now is pulling the remainder of those assessing hours out. We will still have our contract assessor at twelve hundred a month doing the work, but I believe that we can absorb some of any additional work that needs to be done with the existing office staff without having to budget supplemental time. So that, in a sense, in essence, will be a revenue neutral, expense neutral, will pull out about twenty-four hundred, maybe even twenty-eight hundred, depending on how deep down I go in that assessing line. But then it will be replaced with the twenty-five hundred expense for the software. So in essence, we're supplementing human labor costs with software that can be accessed twenty-four, seven, you know, from anywhere. So that is a change that's gonna be happening. Outside of that, it's really only been about a week since we, since we last discussed this, maybe two weeks. And there really hasn't been much. I will point out that we have the next budget committee meeting on February twelfth, and[1768.62] I will point out that we have the next Budget Committee meeting on February twelfth, and we'll be looking at roads and capital improvements, so that's gonna be a big, a big, a big discussion. And we'll get more into detail on all those items. The other thing I wanted to go over is actually under revenues, so if you flip several pages, we found out that our, let's see, what page are we on, revenues? Where is it? I guess it would be about three pages in on this. There are a couple areas that we've seen change. We underestimated motor vehicles per our draft audit, so I do think that we're gonna be increasing those just a little bit more on the motor vehicles.
Ten five oh, ten one oh?
Yeah, fifty-one.
One oh fifty-two?
Fifty-two.
Yep, ten, ten fifty-two.
So we should see more revenue from there?
We should, just a few thousand dollars more, but I, having seen that audited number, I'm feeling more confident about it. And then, again, going back down to the bottom of this, looking at five thousand, five thousand one, use of undesignated funds and use of carryforwards, that draft audit that I saw today, we're actually doing quite a bit better than we originally anticipated in the undesignated fund. Even with the current level of expenditure and use of undesignated funds that we have budgeted for fiscal year twenty, we will, at the end of that year, with the current projections, have a pad of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that fund above the minimal number that we've been required to carry. The last several years, we've been really scraping the bottom, bouncing right on that bare minimum of two-twelfths, and I think that this year, we may be able to comfortably even reduce the amount that we're drawing out of that by a little bit, but still keep a little bit more of a pad there. And rather than being at the very, very bare minimum at the bottom, we could have some more cushion, so I'm looking forward to that. And something similar with the use of designated funds, it looks a lot better than it actually is, because right now, we have a lot of money from the Marne Hook Dam project sitting in that reserve, so that bumped it up quite a bit, but once you take that out and normalize, you're looking at about a fifty thousand dollar increase in that as well. So again, a fairly healthy level of savings, so these numbers will change.
I will say, just for the point of feedback, that on, that on designated funds, if we're really pretty healthy on that two-twelfths, I like the idea of having some additional pad, but I wouldn't mind defraying some tax costs for residents. I'd like to see some of that help the mill rate.
Okay, absolutely.
If that means that we can share off a few cents on what the municipal side is, I would like that.
I think we can do something like that. Definitely, we'll discuss that with the Budget Committee, and I can see that being a good use of that funds, of those funds.
Part of them.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I like the idea of the two-twelfths. I know that's what our policy is, and I think that's sufficient, actually. So I'm happy with staying very close to the two-twelfths. I know a lot of towns don't have anywhere near that amount, even though that's the recommended amount, so.
Well, and it really helps us too, 'cause when taxes are actually being paid, we're suddenly rich, if you will, and then we have to operate for six months.
Right, right.
So, yep.
Yep.
And the economy goes south or something, and we're able to be in a good position.
Yeah.
So anything else on revenues?
That is really it. I haven't heard anything, I think you might be asking about any information from the state, I haven't heard anything new about revenue sharing. I think people are still optimistic, but I haven't heard anything concrete.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard anything at all, but I'm ready to have that conversation with our elected representatives, just to see if we can find out if they know where that might be going, and they're usually pretty good about getting back to us on that, so. I mean, at this point, all bills that are out, a lot of them don't have language yet, they're just bill titles, so you don't really know what they mean. Anything else? Any other questions from folks?
When we meet on the twenty-something, like Seventh or whatever our date is, I can find the date, that would be about four weeks from now-ish. I went way too far on my calendar, so maybe it's only three weeks from now.
For the Capitol Planning Meeting?
Is that what that is? Is the Capitol Planning Meeting?
That's the first joint meeting, will be the Capitol meeting, yep.
Okay, and so at that point, I assume you're going to have some fairly good numbers for the fire station in the library?
Yeah, I think we'll have decent numbers. I don't expect to have good information back by then, of course, but we'll have some good estimates. As I said, we are working with the, an architect for the fire station, and, you know, honestly, I'm probably gonna, if he's interested and able, bring him over to take a look at the library as well, as far as a cost estimate for that work as well. Because it isn't just the roof, it's gonna be the fire escape, the heat pumps, and in both of those buildings, I am looking at the possibility of installing sprinkler systems. It's probably a pie in the sky, I'd love to see one in this building as well, but that's the discussion that we can have at a later time. But we will have some estimates, and I think that we have some good numbers to start with for the fire station already.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I like the idea of the, getting the numbers at least for the sprinkler systems, because if you're going to bond and you're talking another X number of dollars, that's not doubling it, that might be the time to do it, rather than waiting when interest rates go up again. Just seeing what we have to deal with, I like the bigger picture, especially on the library building, I'd like to have a little bit more information than we have now, so I think that's a great idea, see if you can get that.
Thank you, Catherine. We'll move on to new business now. Thank you for that update on the budget, and we're gonna get a little bit deeper into that as we move on in subsequent meetings. So nineteen zero seven one is to consider action on poverty abatements discussed in executive session. We had an executive session on poverty abatements earlier this evening with the notation that would be action in public session, so I'm prepared to take motions in regards to that.
I have three motions to make.
We'll take them one at a time, then.
We'll take them one at a time. Christie, this is a written copy that comes from, I think, me and municipal, if you want it, I can hand it to you afterwards, so you can, you don't have to type it word for word. After coming out of executive session, the board, oh, I, the board is going to make this motion. I move to grant an abatement in the amount of one thousand six hundred ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents pursuant to Title thirty-six, M R S A, Section four, eight four one two.
I second that.
The motion's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
I, after coming out of executive session, I move to grant an abatement in the amount of one thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-six cents pursuant to Title thirty-six, M R S A, Section eight four one two.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
After coming out of executive session, I move to grant an abatement in the amount of two thousand dollars pursuant to Title thirty-six, M R S A, Section eight four one two.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to move that abatement. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. And I just would mention, for the public that might be watching, that the poverty abatement process is confidential, that's why we don't mention names or map law, lot numbers or anything of that, but it is a duty of the select board to consider abatement applications and to then by law approve them or disapprove them. So now, we'll move on to nineteen zero seven three, which is participation in a regional broadband exploratory project. That sounds exciting.
It is.
I was thrilled to read about that, and I make motion.
You better.
The next steps were to invite more towns to go together to try and save us money, get more connectivity and a better price, so, and quicker.
And I mean, this is really just to explore, right? So we're asking the town manager to be, or I shouldn't even say that, we're asking the town as an entity to be more involved in this. In other words, you may be involved directly on the working group, but we may broaden that to bring in volunteers or whatever at some point as they expand their scope.
It does have money involved with it, though, because there's a application-
Right.
-that's due by this February fifteenth, and it said in here that the grant application should budget five hundred dollars to show matching funds for the application, and I believe that was for each town, correct?
That's correct, so what-
So we would pay five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Five hundred dollars now.
So tonight, what I'd be looking for to move this forward would be, obviously, your recommendation that I pursue this and participate in the process, and that you authorize five hundred, five hundred thousand. Good lord.
Okay, so let's-
Five hundred dollars to be appropriated for that, out of, we could pull out of a couple budgets, either, one, I think, would be the revenue we receive from the cable fees, which I think would be quite appropriate, or we could also take it out of contingency. But those are two different options for you.
I would try for designated budget item, designated account first.
Okay.
So you are making a motion.
If it's okay.
Yeah, please do.
Okay, I'm gonna try this. I make a motion for the town of Reedfield to join with Wayne and Fayette, and possibly other towns to include Mount Vernon and Vienna, to coordinate broadband expansion efforts. We will participate in the M C F grant application and approve the town manager expending five hundred dollars for the application due February fifteenth.
I second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, I want to restate the motion, I think it was fairly clear and concise. Is there any discussion on this motion? All ships ahead is what I wanna say, because we do have many people in this town that are working from home, and anything that we can do to help with that accessibility, I think is really something that is beneficial to folks in Reedfield. And plus, I would additionally say, you know, it's not just people working. I wrote a check the other day, that was a really unusual thing to do.
Yeah, me too.
You know, I mean, we, our lives are now quite different, and so this is a realization of that.
And it's been one of our goals, and someone else has taken it on.
And we can participate and partner.
And we can participate, so.
Working together, you are stronger when you work together, and if you're trying to accomplish these things, it's great that these towns have worked together.
That's one of our goals, too, to be interlocal.
It is, and when Mark Robinson called me on this, it was just like, wow, this is great, we have one more thing to collaborate on, we can, one more thing to find success at, so, they're great partners.
And we don't have to use your time to do this one.
Not as much, just a little.
A little bit.
So we have a motion on the floor, is there any additional discussion? There's none, so all in favor? So the only thing I would do in closing out the agenda would be to mention that the next meeting, the nineteenth, is that the one we intend to have, the chairs, annual chairs at?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so there'll be an invitation that will go out to each of the commissions, boards, et cetera, and so that meeting, we will structure it so that the first part of it is the annual meeting of the chairs, and then we'll have our regular business meeting. So we might start a half an hour early, or something like that?
Yeah, so the nineteen, when is the next meeting after that?
The twenty, it's a Thursday.
Is it the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay.
But that's a meeting of, with the budget.
That's the budget.
Yeah, that's not a select board business meeting.
Okay.
But it is, you have to show up.
Yeah, the select board meeting, yeah, the select board meetings would be-
Is it the twenty-eighth, so the twenty-eighth I should put on my calendar, is that a must-do?
It is.
Okay.
You know, last year-
If I'm skipping choir practice, you have to come also.
Yeah. Last year, there was a board member who actually gave us that little calendar to plug into our own calendars.
I love that. I know, right?
Yeah, that was great. Who was that? Yeah, I don't know.
Jesus.
And then we meet again on the fourth, so that following Monday.
March the fourth.
Yeah, we're in our busy season.
Yeah, someone scheduled us that way.
Okay, could I take a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you.